All right. I'd like to make a motion to make Pat to lead the meeting.
I'll second that.
I didn't know if we had to wait for Connie to call in. I think we have to wait for her to call in before we do it. Unless, can she give us a number?
I mean, as long as you have enough votes, we're fine.
I asked her to give us a number.
Yeah, but this is not based on executive session. It's not necessarily, but it's fine. There, we have enough votes to move forward anyway.
We're calling Mrs. Baker. That's what the holdup is.
You there, Connie?
Yes, hello.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Scott, I guess.
Did you make the motion?
So, I'd like to make a motion for Pat to run the meeting since the President and Vice President are not here.
I'll second that.
Is that one at a time or roll call?
We can roll call it.
Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano, absent. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel, absent. Mrs. Bloom?
Yes. Okay, the motion to close executive, we did that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we're going to go over now, this meeting is being videotaped. Anyone not wishing to be seen on television may be excused. Can we all stand, please, with a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the pie of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this evening, we have two presentations to make. The first one is to go over testing, and Mrs. Gerber will do that for us.
Good evening, everyone. I have the pleasure and responsibility of sharing with you the results of last year's state testing. So, we have the NJSLA, which is the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, which is given in the spring, which will be different this year, so it's going to be tough to compare from year to year again. The NJGPA results, which is our graduation proficiency assessment, and the access test, which is for our ELL learners. So, I want to go through the testing report for all three of those groups, and I'm going to hopefully give you a comparison of how we are with the state, break it down by subgroups as well, and for each of these categories. So, thank you for bearing with me. So, the NJSLA is administered in ELA, grades three through nine, math grades three through eight, and also students enrolled in Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II, Science, grades five, eight, and 11. And it does provide state comparative data. A passing or a proficient score is considered a Level IV or a Level V. There are five levels within this assessment, and you need to make a Level IV or Level V to be considered meeting expectations. So, the first slide shows each grade level. It's very hard to see because it's small, starting with grade three to the far left of the screen, to grade nine, and then the final column of colors is all grades. But you'll notice that whenever you're green, like a light green or a dark green, that is your meeting or exceeding. I'll show you slides that bring that number up a little bit closer. So, what we're looking for, really, when you're looking at your ELA results, you're looking at those that are meeting and exceeding, and those proficiency levels, and us versus the state. So, I did a very clear side-by-side comparison, which is a little bit better to see. So, if you look at our grades three through nine, is on the left, all students is at the bottom. You can see the district and the state, and I highlighted where we were higher than the state average, and where, and the difference is the final column, by how much. So, I'm happy to report that in ELA, we are higher than the state in all, in all grade levels, which is a nice change for us and really good, and a lot of work's been commended to that, so thank you. I do want to point out, look at our fifth grade, like 19%, almost 20% better than the state average. We put a lot of work and effort in our ELA programming, and our ELA supports, and working towards that, so that definitely showed off with the efforts that we made last year. Math is still a work in progress, but I'm going to walk you through this because I still think it's getting there. So, again, this is the same report with grade three to the far left, moving all the way to the different subject areas where it does get confusing, and I'll try my best to explain it to you, to all grades. So, again, we're looking at, oops, sorry, I went too fast. We're looking at the last two columns in terms of meeting and exceeding, and where we are in terms of the district and where we are in the state. And board members, you'll have a closer version of this, so you can see, like, in some areas, you'll see where we may have gone up to meeting, and we dipped in exceeding, but total, we did better. So, that's where this document comes in hand. So, in grades three, four, and five, we did do better than the state in our math proficiency in terms of the state average. So, it ranges from, you know, 2% to 10% difference. In grades six, seven, and eight, though, we just were right there, to a point two, you know, 2.8, 3.7, which in some cases, and in some years, we've seen a wider gap. So, we're seeing that gap lessen, which is good news. The other, the other subject areas gets complicated, because not every, you have to remember, in eighth grade, not all of our students take the grade eight assessment. Some of them take the Algebra assessment, some of them take, we have a student who take, we have students who take the Algebra II assessment, depending on where they are in their levels. So, it becomes a little bit skewed. We also don't have every, every ninth grader taking geometry. About 60-something students take the geometry assessment. So, when you're looking where you go above in high school, you're looking Algebra, middle school, and high school. The state just averages them together, but we have to break them out. So, you'll see we're in Algebra I in middle school, which is where most of our kids, our higher kids are taking Algebra I in middle school. Definitely, we did better than the state. We don't have as many students taking it in the high school, but again, then we are unfortunately less than the state. Geometry is about 60 of our students that are taking that assessment in high school, because everybody has a different path. So, again, that's a little bit, that's definitely lower than the state, but again, it's representative of about 60 students. Most of our students are taking in high school Algebra II. So, if you look at the Algebra II, we have middle school versus high school, and in that comparison, you'll see that we're doing, we're, we're growing in that area. So, overall, our math has had a very large gap over the past several years, and we're seeing that gap lessen, and I think that's because we're putting a lot more time and effort and energy into working with staff, working with a new supervisor, working with new curriculum, and supporting our staff with digital tools and resources, and really working with kids to make those real-world connections in math. This brings me to science. So, science is problematic throughout the state. So, in order for science for you to be proficient, you have to score a Level III or a Level IV. You can see the green in this area is much lower than the, those meeting proficiency, proficiency or below proficiency. So, again, we're looking at who scored a three and a four, because that's considered passing. So, when we, when we highlight that, this is where in fifth grade, we were about 7% above the state average. In eighth grade, we're right there, you know, just a slight percentage point away. And in grade 11, it looks like a very big dip with 15%, but when you think about grade 11, they are tested on all the sciences. So, they're going to be tested on things that they learned in ninth grade and 11th grade. So, when you're thinking about how that cycle doesn't really occur, and that revisit doesn't happen as frequently, we definitely see that. But as you can see, overall, with the state averages being 19%, 30%, it is a test that throughout the state districts are struggling with. So, science is notoriously a very challenging assessment, and it's challenging particularly if it, because it is cyclical in nature. So, it's revisiting concepts that you would have learned in, you know, different science courses, and particularly when you get into high school and you get very specific courses in your plan, that becomes difficult to go back and remember what you learned in ninth grade. So, taking a look at subgroups, we're required to show subgroups, and in some of the subgroup data, I think you'll be able to see how we've been improving over time, particularly when we look at those students in, by race. So, the first slide does show race, so it's starting with Asian, next column, black, next Hispanic, multiple races, and white. So, when you look at the green, the light green lime, and the dark green, that is meeting and exceeding. Bringing that up closer to look at it over time, if each category, this is the one place where students aren't duplicated, because they're either written as Asian, multiple, white, so they fall within that category. If you look at the light blue, or purple, excuse me, if you look at that color, that's 2023. If you look at the purple, that's 2024, and then if you look at the dark purple, that is 2025. So, you can see how in ELA, Language Arts, we're incrementally increasing each year by each of those subgroups. It's a trajectory really going up. Obviously, in the multiple, we had a dip last year, but we regained that and surpassed this year. Then we move into, this is subgroups based off of ELLs, Free and Reduced Lunch, 504, Special Education, and General Education. So, some students may live in multiple groups. So, in other words, you could have a special ed student who's also in Free and Reduced Lunch, so they're going to count in both places. But you can see our general ed population is, you know, with the light green and the dark green doing very well. And we saw that in the Language Arts scores, where we surpassed the state in all grade levels. Looking at male and female, we used to have a big disparity between our males and our females, particularly in ELA and math. It's really closer, so it's showing right now that we're, you know, actually providing education for, and inspiring males to be literate, as well as females, and you'll see the same conversely in math when we get to that slide. Now, moving on to math, we're looking back again at subgroups distributed by race, with Asian, then Black cluster, Hispanic, multiple, and white, again, with the light green and green being meeting or exceeding. And this, again, shows incrementally how we're tweaking up a little bit each year. Again, you can see that through Asian, you can see that through those Black, Hispanic. Again, we had a dip with multiple, but we didn't quite do as well as we did in 2023, but we did, we did with our, with our white population. Again, this is by our English language learners, Free and Reduced Lunch, Section 504, Special Education, and our Gen Ed population. Taking a look at the green and the, both light and dark being meeting and exceeding. Here we go again with females and males in math. Very similar scores in terms of passing, in terms of our light green and green. I remember doing these presentations for several years, and we had a big disparity. It kind of followed, unfortunately, the trend that people would say, you know, males will do better in math, and females will do better in, in Language Arts. We're seeing that, that close, so that males and females seem to be scoring very similarly in both subject areas. Science, again, this is obviously indicative of how we struggle because of the cyclical nature of the assessment. So, if we go back to far left being Asian, Black, middle category, Hispanic, multiple, and white. And then moving on how we've progressed over the years. So, based off of these categories, it does show that we are struggling to maintain and, and improve in our science areas, and we'll continue to work in that area, particularly now that we have a new assessment and new directives. We'll be taking a closer look in terms of how our science assessments and our science curriculum can maybe revisit some topics that have been previously taught. Breaking down by ELL, Free and Reduced Lunch, Section 504, Special Ed, and General Education. And our last slide with males and females in science. This is just those, those unfortunately in red and yellow are below or near proficiency, and the green is meeting. So, we have some work to do, but so does the state. The assessment is definitely difficult and challenging. So, moving on to the GPA. So, the GPA was first administered in spring of 2022. It was administered to grade 11 students in math and ELA only, and in the 23, 24 school year, the GPA scores counted towards graduation, and that began in the class of 2024. Proficiency levels, not yet graduation-ready, scores a range of 650 to 749, whereas a 750 to 850 is graduation-ready. So, again, we're looking at Washington Township Public Schools, you know, with the state in that red outlined box, but I want to bring that up a little bit closer for you. I think I do on the next slide. No, I don't, so I'll walk you through it. So, in Washington Township and ELA, we're graduation-ready 86.4%, where the state is 80. We're above in math, we're 60.2%, where graduation-ready for the state is 58.0. That's an improvement for us, because in the past, we've been below, particularly in math. So, we are making gains in the math area. All results, if you combine those, 73.3, where the state is 69.3. If you look at grade 11 ELA to the left, and grade 11 math to the right, that's another way to visualize those passing and not passing in ELA and math. And here's a way to compare it, and this is gonna, I'm going to walk you through this. This is comparing 24, 25 in ELA and math. So, the light blue, if you compare both light blues in 2024 is the light blue, where the dark blue is ELA in 2025. So, we're right, we're right about there in terms of ELA, so we dipped a little bit in graduation-ready, but the math improvement is showing. So, this is where we're seeing definitely for the GPA, an improvement in math 2024 to 2025, where we went from 49.8% to 60.3%, you know, passing from 20, you know, 2024 to 2025 in, in the, in the district, whereas the gain wasn't as great in the state. It was 56.6 and 58.8, and we then surpassed the state. So, subgroups for graduation-ready, going from Asian, Black, Hispanic, multiple, and white. And then this is broken down by our ELL population. Clearly, when you're looking at, you know, our ELL population, you're considering obviously learning English as the first language, so that's can be oftentimes challenging when passing those assessments. Free and Reduced Lunch, 504, Special Ed, and General Education. Moving on to the access test. So, this is the assessment that we give to our English language learners. They have a six-point rubric, where really you're looking at levels five and six, but really about midway between, you know, four and five is considered enough to exit you from the program. And basically, we have this broken down by grade cluster. So, to the far left is kindergarten through fifth grade, with developing being the mustard color. We have a lot of English language learners at the elementary level. We have about 50 of the 78-so students at the elementary level. We have a handful, again, at, you know, grades six through eight and nine through 12 last year. I'm going off those numbers based on this assessment. So, overall, we have a lot of students who do exit, because they are within that developing, but we want to really see them in that expanding, bridging, and reaching. But depending on their year of entry and how long they've been here, the results vary. But we do see growth. We have three ELL teachers that work with this population, and like I said, most of them are at the elementary level in that K-5 bracket, but we do have students at the high school and at the middle school, and students that we do service through a consultative model at the preschool level. So, three goals for us for this year. We really want to continue to moving towards mastery. With the change in the assessment coming up, that will be challenging, but because the tests will look different, and acclimating to that is really a trial practice this fall, which is what we've been going through in the recent weeks, where we've had our, our testing practice administration, and then actually the, the test that's occurring throughout the district as a trial. So, it's not counting this time, we'll find out for the spring, but it's something that we're going to be working through as we learn more about the assessment and comparing how we can, hopefully, they'll come up with some type of a comparison for us, but really starting off of a new slate. But our goals are really focusing on digital tools and maximizing those tools to our benefit so that we can use diagnostic prescriptive instruction. So, if the computer adaptive assessment tells us this is the standards that the student needs, the platform will address those standards right where that child is at, and the teacher also has the autonomy to move that to where they believe the child may need support. We're focusing on small moves, big impact, which is just really good teaching strategies, asking good questions, circulating the room, collecting data, conferring with students, obtaining feedback, giving students timely feedback, and then always anchoring back onto the Danielson model, which is definitely our teacher evaluation model, but more importantly, our teaching and learning model. So, intervention strategies, we definitely have structured interventions and additional time programs. So, we have those in ELA and mathematics. We do have some STEM programs that we're running through grants as well, so if you're concerned about those science scores, we do have that running through Title IV. Supplemental programs are happening in our Title I schools, so structural changes. We do have some revised intervention protocols, because we did reduce some of our intervention staff. However, we're trying to maximize some of those protocols for digital resources. Professional development, we will be learning more about the new NJSLA assessment, the adaptive assessment. Throughout the year, we'll have professional development on interventions and continual look at data analysis, and we do that at the district level, school level, and either grade level or content area, depending on, you know, what level, whether it's elementary, middle, or high school. And then the Shelter English, sorry, Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol, the PSYOP model for our ELL learners. So, and training our staff on that model for when they have ELL students in their classroom, but they're not a certified ELL teacher. And then, again, like I said, integrating some of the digital content. We utilize iReady with the personalized MyPath. Beable, we saw great results in that in grades three through five in our ELA results, as you could see, and that's a really wonderful program. We also have it for intervention this year in grades six through eight. Alex is a math program we use in our middle level, and we'll continue to bolster our student support with iExcel at the high school, because iReady does not go to that level. So, I want to thank you for your time. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me, but I do want to give a big round of applause to all the staff that worked so hard to get the results, particularly in math and ELA, where we're seeing great growth. So, thank you.
Gretchen, thank you so much. That's a great presentation, great growth. Special thank you to all of our staff who made that possible. And the board doesn't know this piece yet. I had a very awesome meeting yesterday with the Chief Executive Officer from Beable, which is a very massive literary solution, and they are going to donate their services for free for the entire district, which for an online program could save us not even tens of thousands, it's, it's way more. So, stay tuned for that, which I thought was an amazing offer, and, and we're going to get it all for free. Yep. Great job, Gret.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
That'd be good, just maybe discuss the presentation. I also thought it was a great presentation. It's good to see, I thought it was very logically broken down, and, you know, while it's disappointing to see in some areas we're below state average, it's good to see the positive progress. You know, I think the only way you improve is by seeing and acknowledging where you are, and then setting goals and that incremental progress. I mean, I don't think we're ever going to see big jumps, because it takes time to, to make change, and we're seeing change over the years, and hopefully, we'll continue to see that change. That's why I think it was important that we had a district goal around academic achievement. And for me, as long as we're seeing incremental improvement, I think that's, should be the goal. Hopefully, with the expansion of pre-K 2, we'll start to see that having an effect on the lower grades. Maybe that's something why the lower grades are doing so well, but, you know, great to see the areas we're progressing and the areas that we're not. I mean, I think, I like that you had action steps up there about how we're going to address it, so, great job. Thanks.
Yes, thank you from all the board, too, for all your hard work and our staff. Okay, right now, we're going to go into another presentation. A few months ago, Mrs. Lanuti got up to the microphone, and it was a night when we had a lot of students come to our meeting upset about their clubs, and their clubs no longer being in the district. And she had a great idea, just try to get community members involved in sponsoring clubs. And between that idea, Mr. Anderson took off on it, and we had a lot of community involvement that allowed us to return a lot of the clubs to our children, and that's what we're here for as a children. And to me, this is one of the best things that I've seen happen in the last few months. So, thank you very much, Mrs. Lanuti and Mr. Anderson, as well as all the community members.
Good evening, everyone. Board of Education, Administration, everyone here in the audience, and of course, our beloved viewers at home. Principal Anderson, Washington Township High School. I am joined by my Assistant Principal, Angela Costello, and we are here to share some uplifting news. As you may have seen at a summer board meeting, as we just talked about a little bit, we were not in a financial position to be able to run all the clubs and activities that we had always run previously. Budget constraints were there, and tough decisions had to be made. We couldn't let that happen, as students continued to be actively involved as they build their college applications, and above all, pursue interests that they love. It was on that evening, we began our crusade to seek donations to make sure that our clubs and activities kept running as they have in the past. I didn't know how we were going to pull it off, but we were very determined. In this very room, before we even finished speaking, two people came up, and we had $2,400 within two minutes of this initial conversation. It became our mission to do a campaign to seek more support from our community, which is always supportive of WTHS, and we appreciate that. Let me tell you, did we ever get support. Everyone from local businesses, not-so-local businesses, family members, friends, even a church, swooped in with financial donations to make sure that our students had continuous access to the clubs and the activities that they love. These companies and individuals truly embraced our high school challenge to students and staff alike. We like to call it M3, M cubed, Making Memorable Moments. In the classroom, around our school, and on the, in the community, and on the field. With the help of Mrs. Costello, we were able to raise, are you ready for this? $31,000 in just over two weeks. Because of the love of country and community that we have built at WTHS, together with the generosity of those around us, many of whom are here tonight, we are back at full capacity and running our clubs and activities that were slated to run. Please join me in a round of applause to these amazing individuals and companies that reached out and took care of us. So, we are here tonight because we're actually going to recognize those individuals who found it in their hearts to help the students at WTHS. Not everyone could make the meeting, Tuesday nights at 7:30 can be a little rough, but those who are here, we have a, a presentation, I think we're going to do some certificates. I don't know who's, okay, Angela's got it, Mrs. Costello, you can prepare. Mrs. Costello, you prepared. Mrs. Costello has them. So what we'll do is, as we call your names, we're going to read all of the names of the donors who were a part of this. And again, these people and companies donated to the clubs that, you know, were not slated to run because of the tough decisions that we had to make. So they really, really helped us a great deal and we're very, very thankful. And after we do so, we're just going to head out and we'll take a group photo to thank some of our donors that were able to be here tonight. So Dr. Hibbs, are you going to join us for giving these out? All right, so we're going to read them all, okay? And if you are here, we're going to have you come up and join us if you would. All right, first we have Music at Bunker Hill. And this is actually one of our retired music teachers, Dr. Mary Bouchong, who was with the district for a very long time. And the wife of former Visual Performing Arts Supervisor, Mr. Bob Frampton. This is Martha Frampton. So we appreciate having you to just join. And again, we're not sure if we have representatives, but we're going to read them all. We have Flynn and Associates. Dioria and Son Mechanical Contractors. Main Street Music. Stanch's Property Services. Christopher McKenty. Teresa Saponara. Teresa is a longtime secretary. She was actually my secretary at WTHS. Absolutely amazing. Smith Funeral Home. Fetch Family Pet Resort. Cadillac of Turnersville. Kids' Choice. Heather Grasso. Sprains, Strains, and Fractures. The Fowler Company. Anthony Panto. The Washington Township Chamber of Commerce. Rowan Boulevard Associates. If you like Lascalas Fire, that's who that is, right? KC Holdings Group. Peter Miller from Ben's Wire. My parents, Raymond and Linda Anderson. Graduates of WTHS, Andrew and Kyle Bunting. Joseph and Terry Schechter. Mr. Charlie Blum. Thank you all so much. We appreciate it again. Thank you.
All right, we're going to go on from there. We're going to listen to Mr. Sistilio go over some of his information from the school and community relations.
Thank you, Ms. Blum. I'm very excited to talk about several things tonight. First and foremost, I would like to make a formal thank you to all of our interventionist administrators, STCs, school test coordinators, and counselors. What we had to endure to get ready for the state test was very hard. We found out on August 22nd that we had a test to do in the fall. And today, the middle school did their first round of tests. Middle school's going to test again tomorrow. And then next week, we're going to have the elementary schools. And then when we get back from Veterans Day, we're going to have the high school. And I have to say that everybody has been absolutely wonderful. It's been very hard. We've been having incredible meetings, trainings, lots of emails. I think I sent at least ten with various color-coded emails. I just want to say thank you because we couldn't have done that without them. So I'd like to give them a round of applause, all the people I mentioned. Thank you. It's very important. So last week, Mr. Lindstedt and I began filming season two of the We Are Township Leadership Podcast. The first episode of the second season will drop just after Veterans Day, and it'll be on YouTube and Spotify. And there'll be different teasers and links on Instagram as well. Mr. Lindstedt and I had the opportunity to meet and learn about the leadership capabilities of the Interact Club with Ms. Yon, leaders in theater productions with Mr. Stefan, and our Junior Air Force ROTC leaders with Lieutenant Colonel Lumpkin. So today, the Washington Township officially inaugurated the annual Superintendent Student Cabinet today, and it's the beginning of a year-long leadership development program focused on cultivating our next generation of community-minded leaders. This first session of the year was led by Dr. Hibbs, Mr. Anderson, and myself. We welcomed back about twenty to twenty-five students from grades nine through twelve, all of whom participated in the Leadership Podcast last year with the exception of few individuals. So these students dedicated, we reconvened to launch deeper exploration into leadership. We talked about the journey of a leader embracing fear, dreaming big, taking charge, bouncing back, and then leaving a legacy. And hopefully by the end of the year, we'll get the students to engage in a capstone project that not only benefits solidarity within the school, but in the town and the community in general while serving others. So this is more than just the Superintendent's Cabinet. Proud to say with Dr. Hibbs's support, Mr. Anderson's support, and Mr. Spencer's idea that he gave to this, it's more of a leadership clinic. So we're excited to have this go on, and I thank all the students for participating. I want to say congratulations, I think today is the day, to Mr. Murphy. He is being honored tonight as one of the inductees of the Class of 2025 Gloucester County Hall of Fame. We weren't able to be there because we're here today, but he deserves a massive shout-out for all he's done. And then later this year, Coach Tracy Burkhardt will be enshrined in the New Jersey Scholastic Coaches Hall of Fame around January. And then wanted to give a shout-out for the fifth, right, Mr. Anderson? The fifth week Friday in a row, we are hosting a football game, and we are playing Howell in the Central Jersey Group Five Championship this Friday at Tom Brown Field. So there's no ability to purchase tickets at the gate, so please go to GoFan app, if you have it, and purchase your tickets there if you would like to come. I know it's Halloween, but I guess when you win, there's really nothing you can do about that. So congratulations to the football team, much deserved. The Philharmonic of South Jersey Holiday Pops Concert is coming to the Republic Bank Performing Arts Center on December 6th at 3:00 p.m. Adults are $35 and students are $20. Tickets are available at the box office Sunday, 10:00 a.m., noon. Tickets will also be available at Ticketmaster. Also, very interesting that I learned today, on December 13th, the Grand Kiev Ballet is going to present The Nutcracker at 7:00 p.m. Also at the Republic Bank Performing Arts Center. Tickets are available at the box office and then Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to noon at Ticketmaster. So if you would like more information, we can give that to you as well. Want to give a shout-out to Ms. Henry, Ms. Connor, and all the schools for engaging in the Red Ribbon Week campaign. It's very hard to say, Red Ribbon Week. But it's in honor of Enrique Camarena, who was a U.S. Drug Enforcement DEA agent who lost his life while defending the honor to protect our young people from engaging in drug use. In his honor, friends and the community members began wearing red ribbons. So that's where the week comes from. And all the schools engaged in various themed days and also organizational things to celebrate that as well. So, Ms. Blum, that is my presentation. I'd like to pass it over to Board Member Gianna, and she will give her presentation for the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Hibbs, Board President Ms. Kazempel, Vice President Mr. Serrano, members of the board, and residents of Washington Township. My name is Gianna Caveing, and I'm the student liaison to the Board of Education for the 2025-2026 school year. I am honored to hold this position, to have the opportunity to bring forth the accomplishments and concerns of the student body. The month of October has been full of exciting events at Washington Township High School. The annual spirit parade was held on Friday, October 17th. Different clubs and activities walked in the spirit parade the night of the homecoming football game, such as Interact, Spanish Club, ROTC, FBLA, Student Council, Gymnastics, DECA, Dance, and Theater, along with many other programs. The junior and senior class council were the first-place winners for the 2025-2026 Spirit Parade. The Minutemen won the game against Kingsway with a final score of 39-36. Congratulations to Ally Kalitz for being crowned Homecoming Queen on October 26. The band teacher, Mr. Calvin Spencer, hosted an event to honor veterans that took place Sunday evening at Washington Township High School. This event provided forty-one veterans with a meal, thanks to Mission Barbecue, and a concert to follow at the Tom Brown Football Stadium. The concert involved performances by members of the high school, choir, color guard, and band, as well as the fifth-grade chorus from Whitman Elementary School. I was honored to have been a part of this event representing students in action and the Board of Education. Mr. Spencer did a wonderful job putting together such a heartfelt tribute to our veterans. I was able to receive feedback from the students at the high school to hear some of their thoughts and opinions on what they feel most proud of our school for accomplishing, as well as what they feel needs to be changed. Students have a rising concern that this new grading system puts them at a disadvantage, especially those who are typically not good test takers. Although most students understand the need to eliminate the option to retake a test, a smoother transition into these new adjustments might have worked in favor of the students better. The weighted category of having a test worth sixty percent of our average grade, as well as quizzes and homework worth forty percent of our average grade, the students believe this was a difficult adjustment. We could use grace and understanding as we continue to navigate this new system. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Let's give John a big hand. That was awesome. Good job, kid. Killed it. Papa speaking is hard. That was wonderful. You killed it. So I want to thank Mike for his leadership. I thanked Gretchen before. And, you know, Mike, you have taken on testing with vigor, and thank you. It's an enormous beast that you're tackling right now, so thank you so much for your leadership. You know, Coach Sirianni says you can't be great without the greatness of others, and you lead by that example all the time. So thank you. I want to also give a shout-out to Mr. Murphy. We wish we could have been there. It is amazing. And also, Mr. Spencer. Gianna did that. I don't think I could do it any better, so I'm not going to even try to touch it, but Mr. Spencer was amazing. But I do want to recognize, I want to recognize Scott, who's one of our veterans, who came and always supports quietly. He wouldn't have told you he was, but let's give him a big round of applause. And thank him for his service. Is there anybody else that's a veteran that I don't want to leave out? Thank you for your service. Yes, Mrs. Serrano's not here, but thank him. He's a Marine. Thank him for his service as well. So it was an amazing night. So just want to make sure we pointed that out.
Did a great job. I had the pleasure and honor of attending that event, and I was just blown away by it. And Mr. Spencer and everyone there did a great job. I mean, there had to be over sixty veterans, maybe more, a hundred-and-two-year-old survivor of the Battle of the Bulge, which just kind of takes your breath away when you talk to somebody like that. But, you know, it was great to see the students being involved with the veterans, and I think it's great for them to have appreciation for them, but also for the veterans. It's thing about the number seventeen point six. That's how many veterans take their life by suicide every day, every day, every day. So often, it's not just the wounds that you can see, it's the wounds that you can't see. And, you know, the fact that we honored those veterans and taught the kids to appreciate them, I was really proud. Mr. Spencer is a veteran as well, Marine. He did a wonderful job, what a great tribute.
Thank you. Okay, under correspondence? We do not have any correspondence, but we need to make a motion to approve the letters of discipline. So can I have a motion to do that?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're moving on to approval of the minutes. Now, I'm taking over here, but I had a question about the minutes. But we didn't have time, Dr. Hibbs, during executive, and it's something I probably should have sent to you ahead of time. So with the board's permission, could we just take off number, the general minutes for 9:23? I have a legal question I want to ask before we vote on that. Can I motion to table that? Is that okay for everybody else? It's just a question I want you to help me answer. Just for the, no, just for the, not the executive, for the open session? Just for that? Do we have to make a motion for that?
It's Pat, so it's just the 9:16 work session minutes?
No, 9:23.
9:23?
Yes.
Regular session minutes?
Yes.
So the other three were okay?
Perfect, yeah.
So the motion is to table just the 9:23 regular session minutes and leave the rest?
And we can talk about, often do the note for the next meeting?
I'll second it so we can get to discussion.
Yeah, discussion.
So if we table it, could we just go into executive at the end? And then we can discuss, you know, your change, and then we could say we'll take action or not? We may take action.
A quick second. It's not going to take long.
We'll do that?
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have to vote.
All right, so, motion to approve the minutes for...
Approve the table.
Oh, okay. Motion to approve tabling of the regular session minutes from 9:23?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Let's have all in favor? Oh, no, that's a roll call. Let's have a roll call.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ross? Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blum?
Yes. Okay, we'll go on. May we have a motion for approval of the minutes for September 16th? May I have a motion for approval of the minutes for September 16th? Yes, yes, yes. May I make a motion to approve the minutes for the month of September, specifically for September 16th? Is there a motion to do that?
So...
It's the 16th executive, the 16th work, and the 23rd executive?
And the 23rd executive, yes, thank you.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. In the next section, under all business, that was G. We don't have all business because what we had was a board goals update, and Mrs. Kuzempel should have been doing that, so we won't be able to update. Do you want to have a discussion?
No, I just have something to add, all business.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to shout out to Junior Jacob Schacter, congratulating on his partition in the summer biomedical research program through the Elio Academy of Biomedical Research Science in San Francisco. And also, the congratulations to Tracy Burkhardt and Kevin Murphy. The other thing, congratulations to all the Washington Township High School Students of the Month.
Thank you.
I mean, the only thing I have for all business is just the Policy Committee. If we can get those members up on the website of who's on the committee, and then hopefully they can meet before the next meeting, November 18th.
The Policy Committee? It was me, it was Ralph, and it was Elaine. Thank you. Okay. Right now, we're going to make a motion to open to the public.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Do we have any cards tonight?
Yep.
Right here.
I think we just have one.
All right, we're going to call up Chrissy Kozar first. Chrissy Kozar?
I'm Chrissy Kozar, and I'm the President of the Washington Township Schools Support Services Personnel Association. I felt it was appropriate to speak at the podium this evening because a friend sent me a social media post, which was concerning to them and felt that I should be made aware of. I viewed this post along with its pictures and was puzzled about the actual goal. We seem to be in a time of posting things on social media with a calculated divisive enough to smear or cause our community to question our motives. My motives are clear. I support our students and am driven to help our district provide the best education possible. My members should be compensated appropriately with benefits and a pension retirement, and do I support candidates who have proven track record in that? You bet your bottom dollar I do. Will I support a candidate who does not support DEI? Absolutely not. Will I support a candidate who has no understanding of how our district works, but was encouraged by colleagues from a law firm to run for this position? No. Nor will I support a candidate who wants everyone to be happy and have fun, but who doesn't seem to be able to want to work with our current board members. Another candidate was data-driven. Sorry, but our students aren't data. So I will be supporting NJEA colleagues who understand the importance of continuing to support our children the best way we can, and I shall be encouraging as many members of the community as possible to do the same. As the President of our Support Staff Union, I have no problem with interacting with board members or members of the community. This post showed me hugging Mr. Serrano. This I do as part of my thanks to him for serving his country and affording me the freedoms of my chosen country of residence. I looked for the pictures of Dr. Hibbs, I looked for the pictures of Dr. Hibbs and I, shaking hands when he congratulated me on becoming the new president. Shame that was missing. Nor did I see my friendly interaction with Mrs. Chilla as we discussed our recent Stuff the Bus event and how we can garner gift cards to supply our nurses' offices with much-needed clothing. So I would love for the person who opened security camera footage to let me know how they got that and who gave it to them so quickly, as I know there are outstanding requests from many months ago. Apparently, it was deemed urgent to share security footage, and I'll say that again, security footage. As a district, just what limitations do we have on sharing security info? Whose hands are the lives of our students and staff in when sharing security camera information? Can we Oprah anything that's on cameras? This should be a red flag for anyone who's a child or a family member in the district. It's unbelievable that an Oprah request could endanger the lives of our most precious community members. You should be incensed, as I am, that this was allowed to happen. Who does that, and who condones that kind of behavior? I was sickened when I saw that, and I actually realized that security footage can be Oprahd. Can it be Oprahd from a hallway in a school? Can it be Oprahd to see if our doors are unlocked and our students unsafe? So I don't know what our parameters are with Oprah-ing security footage, but I'm seriously concerned about this, and I think it needs addressing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kozar. Mrs. Wector, did you want to talk?
So, I'm not sure which video you were speaking about, Chrissy, because I haven't seen any of the pictures, but when an Oprah request comes in for security video, there's a lot of, a lot that goes into the process. So you have to consider what the request is being made for and the privacy of anyone that's in the video. And then you also have to consider if there's any security protocols, you know, that would cause security issues if someone had the video. So I want to let everyone know when security video is requested. We do get legal advice, and we do consider any security risks. I'm not going to go into every single detail. There have been some from this building, and one of the major things that you take into consideration is some of the video that was requested was during a public meeting in a central administration building that was just livestreamed on YouTube. You also want to consider, just as an example, if somebody requested, and I understand your concern about students and buildings, people shouldn't be concerned about that. For an example, if someone were to request, or even from this video, and there was people being screened at the door, or certain number of people in certain areas, anything like that would not be released. If there's video footage from schools where there's students present, it wouldn't be released. If there's some kind of an incident involving a parent and a student, we have allowed them to come in and watch the video with administrators, but anything like that wouldn't be released. So anytime security footage is requested, like I said, we get legal advice and we, you know, weigh all the parameters that I just mentioned prior to releasing it.
Can you leave jump in? Couple more things I think we need to clarify. You mentioned there was a rush. There actually wasn't a rush, and I actually was not involved in this process. We were actually, I think, it took a good while to fulfill this Oprah request.
Yeah, it was over a month.
No rush. But one of the things that we have to always be mindful is our words, right? So what was spoken made it seem like, you know, and I think you said that we endangered the lives of children. I can't believe that you would actually stand up and say that, because any video that's in here would not endanger the lives of children. Everybody knows when they come into the room, because it's clear on the agenda, that everything is videoed. So there definitely was no child endangered by that. We can't, we can't, we can't do that.
We're not...
There's no, there's no back and forth. There's no back and forth. You have to sit down. You had your time to talk, and now it was my time to respond.
You can, you can ask to come back up?
She should come back up at the next session. You know, just, and listen, I'm not telling you how to feel. You can feel how you'd like. However, that was not the release of wrong security footage. It just was not. And then, secondly, we definitely did not endanger the lives of anybody. And everybody that comes in here knows, and what I was trying to say was, on the agenda, we actually say that there is video, and you have the opportunity to leave. I'm not going to go into the merits of the video, because that video speaks for itself. But I want to make sure that we made that very clear, that in everything that we do, we take the security... We take, I got it, thanks. We take the security of our children and our staff as the highest priority at all times.
Mrs. Zuccalas?
Good evening, members of the board, administration, and community. I've been up to this podium many times, and I've kept my composure. I am livid tonight. My name is Patty Zuccalas, and I've lived in this district longer than most of the people in this room. I have seen this community through its ups, its downs, its struggles, and its successes. But tonight, I stand before you not with pride, but with deep embarrassment and disappointment. I am beyond embarrassed by the recent behaviors of the adults who are supposed to be helping educate and raise our children. The conduct of some of our community has become mean-spirited, petty, and downright cruel. This morning, I woke up to text messages and screenshots, photos of me taken after, after the meeting concluded, while I understand that during a public meeting, I may appear on video, and I have multiple times. It never occurred to me that I would be plastered all over social media afterwards, after the meeting concluded, targeted and mocked like a spectacle. And while I know that anyone can take a photo of me in public with a camera or a phone, I never imagined that a security camera inside a school, district, building, technology that is meant to keep people safe, would be used as a weapon for someone's personal vendetta. And I know it came from a security camera in this room, because I sat in a seat over there, and it came from that angle. To my knowledge, the only people that have access to these security footage are administration and security. I also believe that administration only has access to their own buildings, so who has access to this at Central? People in this community love to talk about wasted money being spent and pointing fingers. So I'm going to ask you, who is so childish, so spiteful, that they would waste time and taxpayer money in a financially struggling district to file an Oprah request for security photos of a board president just because they don't like her? And I know the picture of me came from the security, I said that. If you don't like her, vote her out next week. But wait, the person that Oprahd, or at least published the photos can't, because they don't live in district. Stop wasting the district's time and resources just because you don't like her. If you are truly that concerned about her behavior, download the recorded meetings or hire your own photographer. We had to hire an assistant business administrator, because our own BA that sits up here is overwhelmed. Maybe, just maybe, if adults would stop sending endless Oprah requests designed to cause drama and embarrassment, our BA could actually spend time planning for the next school year, so we're not in such a financial crisis, instead of chasing down nonsense. And that's exactly what this is. If this behavior were happening among students, a HIB would be filed. Yet, here we are watching adults engage in the exact kind of toxic behavior we teach our kids to avoid. These actions are immature, unprofessional, and deeply damaging. They are overshadowing the real issues in our district, the education, the safety, and the success of our children. This is what truly matters. We owe it to our students, to our staff, and our community to rise above this ugliness. I am tired of it. Let's start acting like the role models we claim to be. Let's stop the personal attacks and start focusing on what we are all here to do, and that is serve the children of this district.
Thank you, Mrs. Zuccalas. Mrs. Williams?
Just real quick, if I could. So Patty, I couldn't agree with you more, actually, what you said at the podium. It's completely unprofessional. If you don't like someone, then don't vote for them. If you don't like someone, don't renew their contract, right? Just don't do it. But let's move on, because a lot of the unprofessionalism that we've all experienced has had a deep impact on kids. So I'm telling you, I agreed with so much of what you said. I can look at it and say, what are we doing? We're attacking kids at the podium. If you don't like me, you don't have to like me. I have three meetings left. You won't see me, right? But to waste all of this time doing all of the things that we've done over the past two years has been incredibly detrimental. I wish that we would have spent a lot of that time planning for budgets, not asking the community to have to donate, right? All of the other senseless things that we've done. So I agree with you. A lot of the things you said are absolutely true. If we don't like people, don't vote for them. If we don't like the superintendent, don't renew him. But when we start all of the havoc, I see a lot of things on social media as well. It's ridiculous. I've stopped looking, because half the things that I say, I'm like, oh, I didn't know I did that. I had no idea. I had so many enemies, absolutely no idea. I've stopped looking on social media. I don't comment on anything at all, because it's getting to a point of exactly what you said. It's unprofessional, and I think the words you said were beyond embarrassed. I'm beyond embarrassed. I have three meetings left, and I couldn't tell you the embarrassment that I've had over the past few years of what has been said at that podium about kids, about professionals, about staff members. It's outrageous. So thank you for coming up and saying that. I agree with you.
Thank you, Mrs. Chilla. Anybody else?
I don't know if we can even look at it within a policy committee about security footage data, because my understanding is, with that Oprah request, we're bound by legally what we have to provide, right? I mean, that's not up for us to decide. That's based on a legal review, correct?
Anybody else? Okay, Mrs. Williams?
I just have something simple. I wanted to get more information regarding the email I sent to you, Dr. Hibbs, regarding the, yes, the AFC Urgent Care donation. I know I copied you and Elaine, so I don't know if you guys had a chance to talk to the other board, but the Urgent Care has offered to give all the students little care packages, and also the entire staff gift bags, not just the nurses or teachers, everybody. We need the board's approval. So if I could just get an answer on that soon, that'd be great. That's all. Thank you.
So it has to run back through committee, because there's a couple policy implications, including the advertising, that we have to just make sure we navigate the correct way. So it'll run through the next committee, and then we'll be able to give you an answer. You got it, of course.
Mr. Bolusaro?
I believe the, I saw it was for the first time ever, and I have a hard time believing that, but the girls tennis team won their conference. First time ever is a long time in this district, so if that's true, I don't know if you know, Gianna, if it's true, really, the first time ever, that's pretty impressive. So good for them, congratulations, led by the number-one tennis player, Scott's daughter. So I know he wouldn't say it, so I had to come up here and say it. I want to talk about the testing presentation. I've watched probably the last 12 years' worth of testing presentations. I think I've commented most years on them, never really being happy either with kind of the results or even the presentation. I thought this presentation was outstanding. It was, I'm glad Scott said what he said, because he actually said some of the stuff I was going to say, and I'm going to reiterate it. When you put your year-over-year trending stuff, and that's what I've been asking for like the last eight years, that really, you know, you accept where you're at. You're not going to jump to meeting standards, but if you get better, that's something to celebrate. So, you know, setting realistic goals is important. And so, you know, it wouldn't be me if I just dig a little bit further, and, you know, I'm sure you look at data a little bit beyond what you showed, but I hope you look by school, at the elementary level, and by school, so that you can compare and learn best practices. And I see Mrs. Gerber, people at home can't see her shaking her head yes. And that's great, because I never got that acknowledgement before, and the results were great this year. And the results were great this year. They're the best results I've seen in a really long time. So, you know, from just doing, you know, what I do, and to try and make change, it takes top to bottom, everybody working together to do it. It's not one person, it's not, you know, it's everybody. And those results really speak volumes for, you know, the focus that we had this year, even the one area where we dropped last year. But then, not only did we go back up, we went back up enough that it's a two-year increase. It really was. It wasn't just one. So I just couldn't be more impressed by it and happy to see how you presented the data. It was very transparent and very useful, too. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bolisaro. I agree, it was wonderful. Thank you, Mrs. Gerber. We need positive things, and that was a very positive thing, so thank you. All right, Mrs. Maraz?
Hi, I want to apologize for my attire. I had field hockey tonight with my daughter. It was children versus parents. It was a little rough. My name is Candace Maraz. I'm a longtime resident here. Good evening, members of the board, superintendent, Dr. Hibbs, administration, teachers, and community members. I stand before you not to point fingers, but to hold up a mirror, because right now, what I see reflected in our schools and in this community is not what our students deserve. Over the past few years, we've seen resources cut, class sizes grow, and dedicated teachers stretched beyond their limits. Interventionists, the very people who help our most vulnerable students catch up, have been eliminated, only to have the burden now patched over with Title I funds. That's not a solution, that's a temporary fix to a long-term problem. Our teachers have had technology thrown at them without proper training or support. They're expected to adapt overnight, to do more with less, and to perform miracles in classrooms that are overcrowded and under-resourced. And while they do this, while they give up their hearts, their evenings, and their weekends, what do they see around them? They see board members, administrators, and community members arguing, posturing, and protecting egos instead of protecting children. Dr. Rick Rigsby once said, "Ego is the anesthesia that deadens the pain of stupidity." It's harsh, but it's true. Ego blinds us, it makes us forget why we are here. Pride is the burden of a foolish person. You'll never be a great coworker, friend, district leader, supervisor, even a person if it's all about you. As Rigsby said, "Make sure that your servant's towel is bigger than your ego." Unfortunately, our students, the children of this district, are seeing this negative behavior. It is our responsibility to model behavior, to teach them to be better citizens. Because leadership, real leadership, isn't about who's right, it's about doing right. It's not about being in charge, it's about taking care of those in charge. And to our community, to those who often criticize teachers or the union that protects them, I'd like to ask you a question. What are you doing at 11:30 at night, midnight, on a Tuesday night, or any other night of the week for that matter? Because I know what many of us, and even myself, are doing. We're lesson planning, we're grading papers, we're learning another new technology tool we were given without training. We're worrying about the student who's falling behind, or the one who cried at their desk today. We're trying to figure out how to reach every child, all while balancing our own families, our own children, and our own exhaustion. Yes, we chose this profession, but right now, many of our teachers are barely surviving in it. They love their students, but love alone can't fill the gaps that constant cuts, oversized classes, and endless demands create. We can't keep asking teachers to give more when they already give everything. We need leadership that values service over ego. We need a board and administration that lifts teachers up instead of wearing them down. And we need a community that sees educators as partners, not punching bags. We are here because of the kids, the students, who trust us to build them a future. They don't need adults who win arguments, they need adults who win opportunities for them. So tonight, I'm asking this board, this administration, and this community to put aside pride and politics, to pick up your servant's towel, to start listening, really listening, to the teachers on the front lines, the parents trying to hold it together, and the students who are watching us and learning what leadership looks like. Let's stop managing our schools through fear, frustration, and ego. Let's stop pointing fingers and pushing blame on others. Instead, let's start leading with compassion, collaboration, and humility. As I close, I ask each one of you to ask yourselves tonight, and every night, how am I living? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Maraz, and for all that you've done for our children. Mr. Lucchini?
Not what I was going to speak to, but I was wondering where this feigned outrage about spending all our time on drama and not on education, where was the last three years? You know, I saw people coming up to this microphone, and that was the last thing they were talking about. I didn't see one person from the Washington Township Education Association, or one person from the support staff, come to defend Angelina Chilla when this community was identifying her, people in the community coming up to this microphone in conjunction with Mrs., whatever her name is, Cozempel, and the nonsense that was going on. Where was the feigned outrage then? All right. Anyway, here's my outrage. My outrage is the level of thinking and reasoning that goes on in this district. I think it has an effect on exactly what we were seeing up there tonight. Now, we did see improvement, all right? But the last meeting, or the meeting before, the president of the Washington Township Education Association came up here, he didn't talk about all these things that are bothering this lady that just came up to the microphone. No, he came up and he said, "Mrs. Cozempel, I believe now that a lawsuit has been filed against Dr. Hibbs, myself, whatever, that means you're exonerated." Exonerated from what more and more people are telling me is at least suspicion of bid rigging, all right? Which is a criminal act, all right? And he's exonerating her because the guy who got the insurance contract under that suspicious situation was filing a lawsuit against me for talking about it in public, like he was going to intimidate me. That's not going to happen, all right? He dropped the lawsuit, and I'm not at liberty to say why he dropped the lawsuit, but just figure it out for yourself, he wasn't going to win it, that's for sure. All right. But now that he's dropped the lawsuit, Mrs. Blum, should we say that Mrs. Cozempel now is guilty of whatever it was that he was saying she was exonerated from? Like, which to me would be bid rigging, but, you know, whatever. Is that what we should say? Is that really the reasoning goes here in Washington Township? The fact is that the Washington Township Education Association, through their leadership, and a number of people that are coming up to this microphone, have been offering really weak, lame excuses for what has taken place in this district, all right? And you especially stood by it, all right? There is no explanation for what has gone on here with a student, with the attacks on Dr. Hibbs. How many times did they have to get caught in a lie? Or does someone like a conflict counsel have to come in and say, "It's all nonsense," okay? Including the attempted lawsuit against me and Mr. Bolisaro and a few others, you know, it was labeled frivolous by our lawyers, all right? And that's where it was thrown, in the trash where it belonged, all right? But, you know, I'm more upset about what I saw here for the last two years, you know, just excuses, putting in, how do you explain putting in a complaint, an ethics complaint? You're doing the ethics complaint, so you better have some ethics. So you put in a complaint that this kid, Angelina Chilla, and Dr. Hibbs are conflicted or whatever with Mrs. Chilla, because he attended a dance recital, and the girl was never in dance, all right? How do you explain that? Maybe these teachers come up a second time and explain it to us, all right? Never in dance, you had a vice president who resigned because of the nonsense that was going on, all right? You know, before you start screaming about everybody playing dirty by taking your picture and you're threatened, before you do that, you better straighten up your own people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lucchini. Okay, can I have a motion? Sorry. Okay, Mrs. Lanuti?
Before I ask my question, I did just want to say, really great job to Mr. Anderson and Ms. Costello for pulling that off. I appreciate taking some feedback and running with it, and they did more than that. I also want to say, as president of the chamber, there was a lot of our small businesses and chamber members that contributed to that, and I'm really proud of them, so I wanted to publicly thank them, especially those that couldn't be here. That's the kind of thing that I see a lot of, that a lot of people don't see, is how our community comes together. So I've seen that type of thing in sick kids, house fires, tragedies. This is, what's happening in our school district, right up there with some kind of tragedy, if we lose more staff and programming. So it's always really nice to see how our community comes together, and there's a lot of negativity that's always put out there about different parts of township and different organizations and people. And so what happened with this? It was really, I'm lucky that I get to see this a lot, and the good times, that people do come together. So I think it was, it was great to acknowledge that something in that positive light, people can really come together and accomplish something when it's necessary. So congratulations to everybody that pulled this off, especially you guys. Quick question about, and this is something I've mentioned a couple times, about looking into on-staff BCBAs and RBTs. I noticed on our bill list, to de novo was almost $140,000 for the month of October, which is a lot. And I know it's been continuous that we're going to talk about it, we're going to talk about it. Is it something that has been talked about, and how we can go about getting some on-staff BCBAs that are more hands-on with our children? I know that de novo, and it was said to me in a meeting multiple times, we do not provide services, we only provide consult. So $140,000 for another month of consult, when we can have on-staff people actually working hands-on with our kids, is something that I keep hearing it's going to be talked about. So I just want to know where we are in the process with discussing that, and if it's even been discussed. Damn, I had something else. I can't remember. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Lanuti, and thank you for that other idea for the clubs. We did discuss that, Dr. Hibbs, in IA a few months ago. Yes, I don't know if Mrs. Miller wants to address that at all.
The bill list represents monies or expenditures not just within one month. So, you know, I can't speak directly about that particular bill, but I can tell you overall, what you see could, and Janine, I'm looking at you, correct?
I might not be able to tell, but I can see.
Right, it comes, so, so, all I can really say about...
It's most likely multiple months. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. What I'd like to say about behavioral services is BCBAs, RBT services, behavioral consult, we do have direct services that our behavior consultants do. It's not just consultant, they also provide hands-on services. In my professional opinion, we don't need less, we need more. We have, we have a lot of students with a lot of needs in this district. We've expanded our special education programming in this district tremendously, especially over the 11 years that I've been in this position. I did a comparison several years for the board, showing them the growth of these programs and everything that we do in terms of behavioral interventions. We need experts to help us with that. So that's all I can really say about the agency itself. We're always looking for ways, obviously, to reduce costs, but as far as services, behavioral services, I stand by that statement. We really need as much as we can to really support our kids in our classrooms.
Do you have anything to add, Dr. Hibbs? Okay. Ms. Whitcraft?
Hi, Heather Whitcraft. I was wondering, how does one legally obtain an Oprah request based on vendetta and revenge access to security footage of a district building after the conclusion of a board meeting that not only contains images of my child, but also shows the exits, camera angles, and view range of said cameras? I'd really like to know why this was allowed, considering the Oprah form says it's not allowed. We took down maps of our buildings due to security risks, and some people are still waiting on requests, still, sorry, some people are still waiting on requests to be fulfilled from July. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Whitcraft. Hannah Maraz?
Hello, I don't want to make a long speech, but I want to make a statement. The podium is to speak to the Board of Education about issues going on in the school district. It is not a place to speak about issues in your personal life that have hurt your ego. When you are turning to the audience and referral to yourself, that's when you know there's an issue. And board members, this position isn't a place to defend yourself or your actions. Be confident in your decisions. You cannot please everyone, but if you please the students, then you should know you're doing your job. This is not a back-and-forth, this is a meeting to discuss school issues. Try to remember that. Stop using "I," start using "them," refer to the kids.
Thank you, Ms. Maraz. Okay, I think that's all the ones that we have. Can I have a motion to close to the public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to go on to the report of the superintendent. Motion and second to approve items one through four under the report of the superintendent.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion? You'll make your report, and then we... Okay. Roll call.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blum?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move on to J, instructional affairs. Can I have a motion to accept the instructional affairs? There's one item.
So moved.
Set.
Discussion?
All revised.
Okay. I was just going to say, thank you for taking care of that field.
Thank you, Mrs. Gerber.
List. I know you would get right on it.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blum?
Yes. Okay, we're moving on to K.
Oh, Mrs. Clancy, sorry.
Yes.
He's throwing me off that you're here. That's fine, that's okay.
Okay, we're going to move on to K, that's policy. We need a motion and a second to approve items one and two under policy.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Blum?
Yes. Okay, under student affairs and communications, that's number L. Motion and seconds to approve items one under student activities and communications.
So moved.
Second.
A discussion? We're a quiet group tonight.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mrs. Blum?
Yes. Okay, we're moving on to M, that's human resources. Motion and second to approve items one through 43 under human resources. But before we go to that, we would like to honor William Faust. Am I saying that right, Faust or Foss?
Faust.
Faust. Okay, he has taught math in the district for 30 years at Washington Township High School. I believe I might have taught one of his children on... I believe I might have taught one of his children along the way many years ago, but we want to wish him the best and thank him for his years of service. Thank you. Okay, is there any discussion? Oh, we have to have motion?
So moved.
Okay, is there any discussion of numbers 1 through 43?
Yep, I just got one. So, you know, 39 through 42, it's, to me, it's contractual obligation, so I'll be voting yes on them, as I have in the past. 43, I thought those goals put forth are good. I like that there are criteria put forth, so we can measure them on the quantitative ones and on the qualitative ones. I thought it was well put together, so I'll be voting yes on that as well.
I'm going to add to that. I will be voting yes on the numbers 39 to 42, because they are contractual, and there could be recourse if it's not taken care of.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, roll call?
Mr. Ross?
No to... No to 40, uh, 39 to 43, yes to the rest.
Mrs. Baker?
Abstain on 39 to 43, yes to the rest.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes to all of them.
Mrs. Chilla?
I'm abstaining from number 8. I'm conflicted, yes to the rest.
Mrs. Hartong?
I'm going to abstain from M4. One of my personal friends is included on the list. And I'm going to abstain from M39 to M43, because I'm conflicted.
Oh, yes, yes to the rest, though.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes to all.
Mrs. Bloom?
I abstain from numbers 39 through 43, because I too am conflicted, yes to the rest. Okay, moving on. We'll go on to, yeah, finance and facilities. Motion and second to approve items 1 through 22 under finance facilities. Is there a discussion of any of this?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Now discussion?
I have a question.
Sure. Sure.
Included in the bill list, are we paying the attorney that did the investigation, SESP?
Just a second.
Yes.
I was... I was... I tried to communicate this, I don't know if it got through. During the investigation, there were tapes of all of the interviews as a board member since we're pending for this, are we entitled to get that information?
Can you repeat that, Connie? I'm sorry.
She wants to know, can she have the interviews of the staff members? I didn't answer somewhere.
I would have to find out whether or not you can get the tapes of the interviews. I'll let you know, okay?
Now, what if, if we vote to pay him, does that close it, or should we hold off until we can find out if we can get that information? Or would we be able to get that information even if we voted yes to the payment?
You can get that information even if you vote yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
No, just discussion on that. I mean, I think I'll wait for the legal analysis on that, but I also think those interviews were done, and people were told that they were being taken confidentially. So my concern with them being, those interviews being given to the board members is they were supposed to be confidential with the attorney that we hired to do the investigation, but I'll wait to hear what the legal view is on that.
Anybody else? Okay, we're okay then. For finances and facilities, N, motion and second to approve items 1 through 22 under finance and facilities.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, vote, the vote, the roll call.
Mrs. Baker?
Abstain on number 22, yes to the rest.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes. Okay, we're moving on to O, special education. Motion and a second to approve items 1 through 5 under special education.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, roll call?
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes. Okay, P, under negotiations, I don't think we have anything. Okay. Q, under new business, under that, is there any new business from anybody on the board?
Yep. I have one. I'd like to make a motion that we, as a board, schedule a special meeting to discuss budget implications prior to the November 18 meeting.
Second.
We got a second.
Okay, you got the second? Okay, was there discussion of that?
Yeah, a discussion.
Just roll call. Yeah, prior, prior to... Just make sure we have it right.
Okay, that was something we did in executive, so can Mrs. Baker vote?
Yeah, because it's the contact.
Okay. Okay, all right.
I'm sorry. What did you say? Okay, yeah, that's fine. She just wants a meeting.
Okay. Roll call?
Mrs. Chilla? Yes. Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
No.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes. Okay, any other new business?
If I could just have a minute, Pat, I just wanted to take a second to thank my fellow board members and administrators. I've not been present for the last few meetings.
Yes.
Yes. Because of personal health matters, their support has truly meant the world to me, and I'm very thankful for the nine people, or multiple people, that I have up here that I know have my back and support me when I'm not here. Also, please be sure to get your tickets for the Washington Township High School fall play of Peter Pan and Wendy, November 20th to the 22nd. It's going to be a good one. That's it? So thank you, guys.
You're very welcome.
Pat, I just wanted to thank you for stepping up to take the role of president for this meeting. I know it's... You didn't have any advance warning, and you jumped right in there. You did a great job.
Thank you, thank you. Okay.
I do have a question. We have to go back into exec to discuss the minutes. I had another matter for legal advice, so do we do that now or after public?
It depends on you. If you want to do it now, we can do it now. If you want to do it in the public...
Can we finish the meeting and then go into executive at the end?
We can do that, okay.
Yeah. That way...
We'll finish the meeting then. Okay, we're going to open to the public. May I have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I have two cards here. Is there anybody else? Four cards? The first card would be Mr. Lucarini.
Yes, I'm undeterred by these comments about, don't talk about yourself. That was relevant because Mr. Tarashi opened the door. Mr. Tarashi came before the Board of Education and said that Mrs. Kozempel was exonerated because some guy who's already indicted in relation to something else filed a lawsuit against me, Mr. Bald, members of the public. He also filed against Dr. Hibbs and Mrs. Wechter. But it was definitely an attempt to prevent public participation. And that rationale is a disgrace from a professional educator, all right? A sixth grader in a class, well, an eighth grader in a civics class wouldn't offer that argument, all right? Would, just would not. While he wouldn't get an A for it, I can tell you that. So it is relevant, because what I was up here talking about was the lack of reasoning that goes into things. And also, you know, before I came to the meeting, I was talking to someone, I said, what's going to be their angle tonight? Right? Basically, the five people who have made and politicized this Board of Education openly politicized it now, it's open, all right? Those five people now, and their supporters, what are they going to talk about now that they've been shot down everywhere they look? And what do they come up with? This video, which, by the way, was sent to me. I don't know what it was supposed to be. It didn't look like anything damaging to any of the people on the outside. It looked like just the board president, Mrs. Kozempel, was either scratching her chin or something, I don't know what she was doing, but maybe it was a vulgar, you know, hand gesture. Maybe that's why, and they don't want it out there, because that's who she is, okay? That's who she is, right? We saw her. She walked out of the board meeting, which she didn't get her way on a vote, created a seed, all right? And they just want to get her elected, because they have openly said, Mr. Tarashi, when he said, let's endorse these people, he made no comments about education. Absolutely no comments about education. He's on tape, and he's talking about what we can get for a contract. You don't have to like these people, all right? So I think there's, you know, the emperor has no clothes. And the emperor is not just Mr. Tarashi, it's the five people who have been up here, and, you know, there's a case for, you know, collusion almost, right? I mean, it certainly looks that way, based on the way you voted. Tonight, we see a contractual thing with Dr. Hibbs. I don't agree with giving people money for this, those kinds of things, but it's part of the contract. You people approved it. I would have thrown it in the trash, said, come on, you got to come back with something better than that. Maybe something related to the test scores or whatever, you know, Mrs. Gerber was presenting, all right? So it just looked vindictive. And it's been vindictive, and it's been mean-spirited, and it's been hostile towards him, Mrs. Chilla, and you dragged a kid into it, you dragged a student into it. That's a, that's a no-no on all levels. I look back to the teachers I've had in the past, that would never have gone on in Washington Township. Somebody would have spoke up and said, that's where we draw the line, all right? Especially since it was all false. You have a teacher who gave a kid a grade zeros when the kid produced doctor's notes and was under concussion protocol? I'm surprised that teacher has the audacity, two years later, to bring it up as a complaint, all right? That's how bad it is here, that you can say just about anything, right? Where do you get off not following protocol for a concussion? Nobody else is allowed to do it. I sat at a meeting where Mr. Whale, and a supervisor, told a woman that because she gave a kid, made a kid wait 30 seconds to go to the bathroom, that he could lose his pension and everything else over that. So if it's that important, I would think a concussion's even worse, right? And yet, she ignored it, and we're supporting it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lucarini. Sean Lindsay?
Good evening, everybody. Sean Lindsay, Washington Township. Again, look, you can say whatever you want. How did you, how do people still vote no on the miracles? I understand everybody's upset that they were even in the contract, but Mr. Lucarini took my thunder, but it's okay, I'll reiterate it. It's contractually obligated. If any teacher had merit pay, and they didn't get paid, what would happen? Again, I'm saying if. Thank you. Please don't interrupt me. If you had merit pay in your contract, and you didn't get it paid, guess who's going to be up here? You got Mr. Tarashi up here, you got Mr. Russo, Christie, I'm sorry, I forget your last name, I'm sorry. But you're going to have them up here fighting to get it back, or get that merit pay. So why is the board continuing to vote no on a contractually obligated item? It doesn't make sense. How the three of you can sit up here and still vote no on a contract item? He satisfied the goal. Again, I keep reiterating it. He satisfied the goal, the evidence proved that he did it. Why are we still playing games? Like, I'm sorry, there, I'm going to say it. There was a student that came up here, she made more sense than the three of you did. Stop playing games. We're supposed to be acting like professional adults up here, and the three of you clearly can't do that. I don't know what else to say. Anybody else that was in here that had a contract problem, are you going to vote no on them? Probably not. It's embarrassing. That student had it right. We're supposed to present problems up here, not create them. And certain board members are creating the problem. Grow up. Stop the childish crap. I've said it before, stop it. I feel like I'm, I feel like I'm an adult yelling at a puppy for, you know, defecating on the floor. I've said it for the past few months. Stop this childish back-and-forth, tit-for-tat. We have problems up here. We have a problem with a superintendent not getting his merit pay. Can we go, can we find more stuff to dig up on him? Or can we officially be done with all this now? It's pathetic to sit up here every meeting, and I've watched a few, I've been here, to watch the games that have been played from board members, from attacks on that man, on children, on other board members, from other adults. Really? I thought when you reach a certain age, you're supposed to mature and grow up, not act more childish, and more vindictive, and more, hey, let's get him with this, let's get him with that. Well, guess what? The ammunition's gone. You fired everything you could at the man, and everything that you've tried, it's been false. It's not accurate. Let it go. The man came back to do his job, he hasn't been able to. Why? Because he's been fighting other board members. We're supposed to be supporting our staff, supporting our administration. Half of you aren't. Every time there's a vote, just now, again, I keep going back to it, the merit pay, it's always a four to three, or a five to four, over a contractual obligation. If it was if he can have his parking spot, oh, they vote five to four. No, we can't have his parking spot anymore. Why? Because we can vote no, we're going to do it that way, because we have the power now. Just, look, I can't curse, I'm not going to, I'm going to not curse, but stop this childish stuff. Let it go, just, can we just admit, admit that you lost? You don't want to admit you failed? Okay, but the evidence proves that you did, so let it go. Let's start, let's go back to doing what we're supposed to be doing, which is supposed to be supporting our staff, watching interactions between administration and staff. That was great, that meeting two weeks ago, where I heard, excuse me, Mrs. Gerber had a great conversation with staff about improvements. I don't hear that anymore, and it's sad. I'd love to be able to hear, hey, we had a great conversation with administration about, you know, math scores improving because of a new program that Dr. Hibbs, you know, got through with the board, and hey, we're seeing test scores rise 20%. It's all thanks to the, you know, the camaraderie between staff and administration. It's all thanks to the camaraderie between staff and administration. All now, I'm hearing is, how are we going to get him this time? What can we get him on? Is there a way that we can do this? Let's figure it out. Because obviously, we don't like the man, so we're just going to keep throwing stuff at him until it, until it sticks. Got news for you folks. The man's here. The man's going to do his job. And I'm shocked that he's willing to still do it after all the crap that he's been through. So again, in the words I've always said, Dr. Hibbs, I'm sorry. I, there's nothing more I can say. I just, I wish you the best, man. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lindsay. I'd like to clarify one thing. When I don't vote on these merit goals, I very much would like to, but I'm conflicted, as is Mrs. Hartong. It's not a choice. We can't vote on them. Okay, we'll go on to Mrs. Lanuti.
I did remember what I was going to say the first time. When do you think the investigation report would be available? How long does that take? And once it is available, how does the public know that it's available and how do we get a copy of it? There is a lot of opinions and we talked about this at the last meeting, hearsay, one side, the other side, black and white will kind of settle all of that. Hopefully, it's able to be understood correctly with all the redactions. I understand why that has to be. It's fair to one side, not the other, I guess. But hopefully, we can understand better exactly what happened because it is weighing pretty heavy on our community and everything that's trickled down from it. Another thing is every time you guys vote no, it costs all of us money. Unfortunately, he's getting the merit pay one way or another. It's going to happen legally or it's going to happen because you just vote yes to uphold a contract. If you keep voting no, that $27,000, whatever it is, is going to turn into 100 and, or whatever it is, and we don't have that. So he, I don't even know who said it, but whoever said it was correct in saying that if something happened with a teacher contract or an admin contract or support staff, you guys would make sure they were upheld. And it's not fair to not uphold a contract based on spite or whatever the reason is, but it's costing all of us a lot of money the more you do that. We already had to pay $16,000 to a residence attorney. That's only one that was settled. If we double that for how much it costs for our own attorneys, that's $32,000. Ironically, that is the same price tag that Mr. Anderson stood up here and said that was raised for clubs. It's the same amount of money that we paid in legal fees that saved 27 clubs. And that's just on one thing. So this is going to keep adding up to more money. And I don't know if that many people are going to step in next year, if it happens twice, to save more things. They did it this year before that report came out. And I have to say that there was a couple of people that really weren't happy about it, that donated. So I don't know if you're going to get that same reaction next year if it keeps happening multiple times. And it's really unfortunate for our kids because they're the ones that are going to suffer. I just want to go back to the DeNovi thing. It was absolutely said that they only provide consult, not services. And as I sat down, I received multiple messages from staff members saying, and I quote, and these are people that are in the classrooms with the kids. That's a crock. Who polices them? They don't work for us. Nobody can, nobody can police them. They play on their phones in the corners. Sometimes they blatantly don't care about behaviors. Staff is the one that is hands-on. Our support staff is so great, hands-on with our kids. And yes, they do need more behavior services, 100%. They need, they need hands-on services. I guess that will actually help some of our staff. And I'm not saying it's all of them. I'm not saying all the staff members are bad. But things that I've heard from our actual staff that are in the classrooms with kids are saying that they are not actually hands-on with our kids when they need them to be. I've also talked about before that they are a company that is pretty known for financial fraudulent issues. And actually, one just happened very, very recently. Who looks over our billing list for the hours that they turn in to make sure that that's accurate? Somebody has to be responsible for that. And I know that 140, whatever it was, you said was for multiple months, but they're on the bill list every month for tens of thousands, hundred thousand. I mean, it's every month, it's a lot. So who is going through their billing list to make sure it's accurate? The owner of the company actually just came out himself not too long ago, saying that they were overbilling for hours that were never even used. So paying them that much money, how do we know that that's not happening here?
Thank you, Mrs. Lanuti.
Do you want to talk about just in generally the process? Well, I mean.
I was just going to. I know the first question was about the investigation report, so I'm still waiting on legal guidance on that. If you do want a copy, I got a couple of OUPR requests for it. If you do want a copy, file an OUPR request. As soon as I get some kind of an update, I'll share it with whoever put in a request. And I guess we could at a meeting if we're allowed. As far as, the question was, you know, how do we go about getting the report and when will it be available?
Yeah. And, you know, just again, for the community, the short form is exactly the short form of the long form. And there was no evidence of misconduct. So I don't know what's being discussed in the community, but if it's being discussed in the community, the long form is going to be different, you're sadly mistaken because that's just not how it works. Just not how it works. It's just reputational damage. People need to just be mindful that people's reputations are important. And we definitely have processes to double check vendors and all of their invoices.
Okay, are we finished with anything else as far as Mrs. Lanuti goes? We're okay? Okay. Mrs. Sukalis?
Okay, so I'm back up. I actually don't have anything prepared tonight. This is more of a reaction of the presentations from tonight. So again, Patty Sukalis, I'm the WTA co-curricular chair for the Teachers Union. So I also want to publicly thank all of the businesses and the people that came out and donated for these clubs. It was such a huge impact on our students and how much they were able to get involved. I have a child at the high school who's a senior. You know, the clubs that they were able to do and the, you know, the relationships they build with the teachers and doing the projects they do is just unbelievable. And so I also, from the union, from the WTA, want to thank all of those businesses, all of those private donors, because it really does mean a lot to our, to our staff, to our students and, you know, the success of our building and what makes our building so great. The second thing I wanted to speak about is the test results. So as the former math interventionist at the high school, I am proud. I spoke about these numbers in the spring because I knew the preliminary numbers, but now you can see for official record that our math scores went up over 10% from the previous year. And I'm not going to take all the credit for myself, but I do want to say that the program that we ran was phenomenal. We had tiered support where we had two math teachers in a classroom, we had two English teachers in a classroom. So those teachers could kind of divide and conquer. We could provide the support that these kids needed. In addition to that, Ms. Maraz, who actually happens to be there, she was the ELA interventionist, I was a math interventionist. We were actually able to pull small group instruction for additional support for these kids. It was amazing, the relationships we built with these kids. These are kids that typically do not like math, do not like English, sometimes do not like coming to school. We forged such great relationship with kids. In fact, one that left our district because she moved still reaches out to me this day and didn't think she was going to be able to graduate. And she's, I always tell her, she's my intervention poster child because she went from having a very, very low test grade, the first test, to getting a C on her own with very minimal support. And that just shows you the, how we can have such an impact in the classroom. Unfortunately, through budget cuts, we had to cut the tiered support program and we had to cut the intervention program. So looking at these numbers, because you know I'm your numbers girl, numbers don't lie. This support has such a huge impact on these kids in this classroom because if I can focus on the students that are struggling, then the teachers can focus and give bigger advances to the students that are in the classroom instead of letting them sit and not grow. So you can see it from the proof of the numbers and the growth over the years comes from when her and I were involved in the program. We had another couple of teachers. Mr. Guyberson was a part of it. Mrs. Reardigan, who was a retired teacher, came back and did it. Ms. Genova, who left our district to go to another district when the positions were being cut. But, I mean, it was such a phenomenal program. And I really, really hope that you look at this information, put the priority back into the classrooms and where we need it. So when you're going through these budgets and when you're looking at what we have allotment for, is look at the impact on what we had. And it's the group, the math department, the English department, what we were able to do over the past couple of years is phenomenal. But we're not going to be able to achieve those kind of numbers without the support. Now that we're looking at 28, 29, 30, some of these English classrooms are up to 32 kids in a class, we're not going to be able to give the individual supports. We're trying it through this small movement's big impacts, but it's very difficult. I will tell you, I'm teaching right now in one classroom, 28 students to try to get them to pass the test of record. It is very difficult to work with those students to try and meet their individual needs, which is what they need from us right now. So as you're looking at this budget, I just implore you to look at what has happened over the past couple of years. Please put priority on what we need, which is support for these kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sukalis. Mrs. Williams?
Hi again. I forgot to mention earlier, and I just wanted to give a shout out to Herfield because I absolutely love Herfield so much. We have the best staff and teachers. I know, I'm not sure what her name is, but the lady that got up and talked about what you're doing at 11:30 at night is, I just wanted to say thank you to Mrs. Cottigan and Babino, I'm sorry if I mispronounced it wrong, is they've taken out of their time to come to our kids' sporting events and I just think that's amazing. We have great teachers and support staff. And I just want to give a shout out to Herfield because I just thought it was amazing. You don't know how happy it made our kids. They're so excited to see their teachers out. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams.
Before you move on, I just wanted to give a shout out because Mrs. Tiger Williams is here from Herfield. My daughter loved you. She did. And she only, she only had her for half a year because of COVID. But our teachers are so important and they deserve the world and I wish we could give it to them. I really do because there are so many teachers between my son's 12 years here and now my daughter's 10 years here, which I'm very sorry to mention out loud because that just shows how long you've been here. They've had the most amazing teachers, the most amazing support. And I couldn't be more thankful and more proud of our district. No matter what we're going through right now, it's a rough patch. I get it. We're, it's like arguing kindergarteners right now. But our district is amazing and I need everyone to remember that. Our support staff is amazing. Our teachers are amazing. Our custodians are amazing. Our admin are amazing. So I know things look rough right now, but just try and remember how great our school is. Our schools are, how great our teachers are, how great our admins are. There will be a calm to the end eventually. We just have to get there. And if we continue to work together and support one another, I have faith that we will get there. Just, everyone needs to be a little patient. And remember, at the end of the day, everything you do, anything you claim automatically will hurt our students if it's a negative thing. And no one wants their kids to be hurt. And I certainly don't. And I still have two years here. And like I said, I couldn't be more proud. I couldn't be more proud.
Thank you. Ms. Whitcraft?
Hi, Heather Whitcraft again. I just wanted to be clear. I'm extremely disappointed administration did not think to consider protecting my son. I want an answer for how I go about filing the same request myself and the turnaround time, considering the files already exist. I can wait here so I can take notes for your response since everybody else got a response. But I'd like the directions, what I need to fill out, how I need to word it. I just want to get it done.
It's not, I'm not being difficult. It's not my job to help you fill out an OUPR request. So if, about OUPR requests, you can find the form online. And if you're asking for this room on a meeting like this, you'll get it. But it, everyone seems to think that this was like a rush job. This, this, this OUPR request came in a long time ago and, you know, and then we fulfill all OUPR requests within the letter of the law. And we followed the advice of our attorney and that was readvised today that we did the correct process. So, I mean, just go online, look at the OUPR requests and fill out exactly what you're looking for. And then you can submit it to Janine.
If it's, if it's the same video, obviously, it's not going to take as long because I already have pulled and already got the legal advice. Also, if you want to just send an email, you can send an email, but you might want to look at the form because there are certain questions that have to be answered. So if they're not in the email, if someone submits a request without the form and doesn't answer the questions, I typically just respond back and say, could you answer these questions? And then it becomes a valid OUPR request.
Thanks.
If it's the same video, it won't take long at all. It's already been fulfilled.
Thank you, Ms. Whitcraft. Chris Lawrence?
Good evening. I wasn't sure if I was going to speak tonight, but I felt compelled to. So my name's Chris Lawrence. I'm in Township 40 years. Moved over here from Delaware County, Pennsylvania. Raised three boys in this town. All went through Washington Township High School. They did tremendous. I've always been very proud of our town, the school, the administration, the teachers. I've never been more disappointed than I am right now, though. And I'm a little confused because I do support the teachers and the Teachers Union 100%. My kids are what they are today in large part because they're a product of this school system. I could say I was a great parent, but I know that my kids spent more time with them than they did with me probably. But I don't understand why it isn't clear to the teachers and the Teachers Union that the Board of Education is not there specifically for all of your best interest, that they're there to manage the school system as efficiently as they can, to give you all the tools you, that they can give you, to do the job as good as you can do and to do it efficiently, fiscally responsibly, and ethically. And I don't understand why the teachers and the Teachers Union isn't just as outraged as the people on the other side of these discussions that have been going on because of the conduct, the way this board has been handling its business. Now, maybe I'm being very simplistic about it. You know, there isn't enough money to do everything, to satisfy everybody's needs, to give everybody what they want. Hard choices have to be made. That's what this board is for. And you're not going to like some things, you may like other things. And there's always going to be a healthy debate about how to get what needs to be done, done. But to support a board that has acted as unethically as it has acted in the last six to 12 months, and the amount of time, money, and energy that has been spent with both sides defending themselves is outrageous to me. And I'm glad there's an election coming up. It's always darkest before dawn. So we have a chance to start. So we have a chance to start changing things on Tuesday and we may or may not. Unfortunately, the union has thrown a lot of money at one side because they feel their best interests are best aligned with one side. That's not very healthy, though. So my only point is, I, I think there should be outrage from both sides at this board. I think everyone on the board should consider resigning, honestly. And I'm not picking sides here. I just think it's a mess and you have not done your job, ethically or fiscally responsibly. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Baldassero?
Just real quick, I want to jump on what Mr. Lindsay and Ms. Lanuti talked about in relation to goals. You know, you have an opportunity here, and I'm going to talk about next year, okay? I, I don't understand why, why you won't vote for goals. It's in the contract, guys. It's an opportunity, okay? We all know this board is being sued. And I hope you all understand, you're going to lose. So here's your chance, right now, related to that, set goals that will help move this district forward. I heard Mr. LaLiberty say that the goals out there have metrics to it and improvement because I'll tell you what's going to happen. You don't give him goals, he's going to get paid above 100% because you guys are sticking it to him. That's what you're doing. Your stubbornness and arrogance related to not setting goals that will help move this district forward is going to cost us taxpayers more money. Please, speak as to why you justify not approving goals. Why are you not doing it? Those of you voting no, those of you ignoring the people talking, why are you doing it? Because again, you're playing with our money. Okay? It's our money. And so if he was, has the ability to earn $40,000 in goals, I don't know what it is, and you don't give him a goal, he's going to earn that plus whatever the legal fees on top of it. So let's set goals, let's take an opportunity to figure out, we, we saw test scores going up. You just heard a great speaker about the challenges we're going to face with, you know, where we are fiscally. Ms. Saccallis talked about the concern of, you know, what we're going to, what we might lose. We're going to have to cut more next year. We already know that. We may have to cut more this year. We know that. Set goals to help our district move forward. What, why are you against that? Can anybody rationally state why you are against setting a goal that will help move this district forward? You're penalizing the district when you do that in money and in potential improvements because, again, we're just going to give the guy money if we don't set a goal. That's stupid.
Thank you, Mr. Baldassero. Becky Bates?
Hello, Becky Bates, Washington Township resident alumni. I, first I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Spencer for putting on the veterans' performance this weekend. It was a beautiful thing to recognize them. Mr. Anderson emceed for us. The little kids that sang from Whitman were amazing. They had a lot of fun out there. And the veterans that we celebrated felt really appreciated and had a great time there. The students from the high school volunteered, they were great, they helped feed them, they helped escort them out to the field, they had conversations with them and learned a little bit about their lives. It was really great to see. Okay. The next thing is that the band, the marching band is having a fundraiser tomorrow night at Blended Joes by PJs from 4:00 to 8:00. If you've mentioned Township Band for them. They're also going to their championships this weekend at Hershey and I'm hoping they do really good. They have had great performances all season and have worked extremely hard. Okay. So that's up for band. The next thing is before our next band meeting, or the next board meeting, wrestling season starts. We still do not have middle school programs as far as I know. And I'm wondering if there's any other options for the children, whether it be if they're in eighth grade, if they can wrestle with the high school, or are there any districts that are willing to accept our children into their program since ours are not running? And that's all I have.
Can you tell, repeat where the fundraiser is?
Oh, Blended Joes, it's by PJs. Yeah, I can give you the address because I have it right here. So, real quick. 421 Herfield Cross Keys Road.
Thank you.
Mr. Distillio, I'm going to put you on the spot real quick. Do you mind if I address? Will you, you'll put out a parent's square tomorrow to everyone? You've been like on fire with all the fundraisers. It has? Just like that day? Like, do you need to pick me up after work?
Sure.
I'm just going to put it right on the spot.
I will, Ms. Chilla, I will put out a parent's square after this meeting, okay? I will take the one that's on just for the high school and I'll blast it to everybody and then I'll wait for the emails to tell me how annoyed parent's square is for people. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So Mike got to say something nice. I have to say something sad. There's just no way we can bring back any middle school sport this year. I'm very sad to report that. I, I'm saddened immensely that we lost middle school sports. We will do everything in our power to have discussions for next year, but there's really nothing we can do this year. I don't know of any other tool that will allow them to come. Yeah, I mean, they definitely, you definitely can still wrestle in township. I mean, we have a ton. Yeah, we have a ton. What was that? Oh, got it. And, and no, as an eighth grader, you, you can't wrestle with the high school. So I'm, I'm so sorry to have to say that.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Kozar?
Hello, I'm back again. Okay. Just one thing I'd like to address or ask a question about. Somebody just mentioned the unions giving somebody money. Can I ask who that was? Or the unions give a lot of money to, I don't know, candidates or something? We don't have any money to give anybody. I don't know where some people get their ideas from. It's really not something that should be perceived that, you know, unions give money to. It's just not, it doesn't happen. So, you know, much as many people would like to believe that we're rich and famous and love to give people money, we don't have any to give. All we give is our support and our time. So just wanted to put that right for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kozar. Okay. Go ahead.
I had a thought about the middle school sports based on the comment of aging out. I wondered if we could discuss with Parks and Rec increasing the age range? You know, like they, they have flexibility potentially on what ages they have, whether they're going to form a 14U or 16U, you know, given that the kids got displaced from middle school, it might make sense for them to create a new league.
Can we, can we make the liaisons to council, maybe bring that forward in a meeting? Because, right, because that's right in the Park and Rec. I forget who's council liaison, but that might not be a bad topic to bring forward. I don't know if you guys have met. Scott, are you on that? I'm not sure if you are.
We haven't, we haven't met.
Yeah, I mean, that might not be a bad idea just to, if we have liaisons to council and we can grab more ages, given we don't have middle school sports. I don't know.
Yeah, I just think we should do it sooner rather than later before the, they start rolling.
Becky, let's connect so I have, I have your info before you leave. Perfect.
Okay, I think it's time to make a motion to go back into executive.
You have to close this.
Have to close this meeting?
And then you have to read this.
All right.
May I have a motion to close the meeting to the public?
So moved.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
So now when you read that, you're going to go into second executive. So you have to, what you'll do is you'll read this and then say legal matters and then read that, don't motion to close, but say how many minutes you're going to be in. Okay?
Resolved that pursuant to Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, the public shall be excluded from that portion of the meeting involving the discussion of legal matters. Further, resolved that discussion of such subject matter in executive session can be disclosed to the public if any action is taken by the board either at the resumption of the public session, at the conclusion of the executive session, or at a public session at somewhat later date. We'll probably be in executive for about 20 minutes.
20 minutes?
Yep.
So am I. Thank you.
So, but we need, we need that motion. Like I need someone.
Motion to close.
No, motion to open.
Motion to open in executive. Motion to open.
So moved.
So moved.